So in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this special meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First and foremost, we ask that everybody silence their phone, please. There should be no phones going off during the meeting. Charles Brown and Jennifer Ragnow both asked to be excused. Erica Inosensio sent me a text. She's on her way, just to make you aware. I'm not going to interrupt the meeting when she walks in. I'm just going to write the time that she gets here.
Sounds good.
Okay. Councilman in Barson, Sammy Siobhan, Mustafa Mansray, Theodore Chase, Robert Thomas, Mahir Rafiq, Rebecca Hilbert, and Chairman Rossini.
So before we begin, let me familiarize everyone with sort of the rules of engagement for tonight. So as you came in, there was a sign up sheet that gives us an idea of how many people are going to speak, and we'll call you in the order that you signed your name. If you're not on the sign up sheet, that doesn't mean you can't speak. So everybody will be given a chance. We will end promptly at 10:00 because we do need to vote on this application tonight. We will give everyone five minutes to speak, and that will be hard and fast. In the past, I have been lenient with speakers, no matter whether they're sort of on point or not, and that led in the last meeting to the receipt of some criticism that, you know, people are like, oh, we're giving you four minutes and 37 seconds, and you responded for 30 seconds. So I'm not doing the math. So easiest thing to do, five minutes, and that's it. We'll let you finish your thought and, you know, not start a new one. The Board, the attorneys, anybody who is here, will not engage with the public. It will be five minutes for the public. And if there's any response, then there can be response when that person is through. We have made a habit of somewhat responding to the point that the person's making, sort of as they're making it, but if people are going to count time, then we'll just give the public that time. Again, I said we will end promptly at 10:00. Eric, anything else to add that I might have forgotten?
Couple of items. First of all, folks, it is comments related to the application. It is not cross-examination of witnesses. It is not a back and forth with the applicant or the objector or anyone else. Come up, state your reason or reasons why you are in favor against the application. The chair indicated five minutes. You are not required to speak for five minutes. If you have two minutes, that's all you need. There will be no back and forth with the Board. The Board is not here to engage in conversation, and I would ask Board members to please restrain from commenting, no matter how hard it is. That also includes myself, the engineer, the Board Planner, et cetera. This is the time for the public. The order will go as follows, and Mr. Chairman corrects me. It will be the public. It will then be a representative, if there is one, from the Canal Walk Association, the Board, then Mr. Lieberman, then counsel for the applicant, and then the matter will be closed, subject to Board deliberation. So this is it, folks. The applicant has indicated the time of decision is the end of the month. Therefore, the Board will make a decision this evening, but at some point, the Board will close the public portion, and it will be just Board deliberation. One last item, mostly from my own edification. There's a stenographer here. Please do not call from the audience, comment, whistle, applaud, boo, or any other noises. If you want to say something, get up to the podium and say it. Otherwise, sit in the audience, let the Board hear what everybody else has to say, and please allow the matter to be conducted in an orderly fashion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And one last minor addition. When you do come up, please state your full name and spell your last name so that the stenographer can record it. And Christine, at the end, you can give the stenographer the sign up sheet so that any, you know, name problems can be corrected. So the first thing, as usual, we will open to the public for any general planning comment not related to this application. Probably not a lot of people here for that, but we have to do it. So I'll move to open to the public for general planning. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open for the public on any general planning comment. Seeing no takers, I move to close. All in favor? All right. Now the matter of B-9. So obviously, all the, you know, testimony and everything is done, so we make a motion to open to the public for comment on B-9 Schoolhouse.
Second.
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public. And Christine, if you want to read off the first name on the list of come up.
James V. Solomos.
My name is James V. Solomos, S-O-L-O-M-O-S, and I reside at 7315 Minuteman Lane here in Somerset, New Jersey. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of New Brunswick, and I lived with trains and buses and noise all of my life. My wife and I moved to Somerset seven years ago with the explosion of, in the last few years, and with the explosion of the Amazon warehouses and other new warehouses on Schoolhouse Road surrounding Canal Walk. They've impacted our quality of life exponentially for the worse, worst. The 24-by-7 truck operation with related beeping signals, beep, 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 my middle name, interrupts sleep, and the increase in truck volume adds additional time to every These proposed warehouses will double down on the existing noise and traffic congestion directly across from us. Who knew we were moving into a mega warehouse site seven years ago versus a residential 55-plus community in the beautiful township of Somerset, Franklin, on the historic Delaware Route and Canal and State Park? This has been a learning experience for me and many of us in the warehouse group proposing B-9, and I've learned about municipal planning structure, governance, planning board, master plan, 10-year master plans. We're here on Canal Walk about 17 years ago, so I'm not sure where the master plan was relative to the issue we're struggling with here. So, you know, it's a shame that the township zoning and township planners who sold this site for active adult homes, knowing full well their 10-year plans were all for warehouses. This is a health and safety situation for thousands of residents, not just in Canal Walk, but all the surrounding communities. Somerset Run, Sterling Point, Renaissance, were all affected. Please do the right thing in denying this application. Please deny it, do the right thing. Thank you.
Daniel Robinovitz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Robinovitz. That's spelled R-O-B-I-N-O-V-I-T-Z. I live at 67 Bayard Road, and I am not a member of SEWAG, although I am so proud of the work these members have done, not only for Canal Walk, but for the entire community. I have lived at Canal Walk for 18 years. My wife moved to Somerset in 1974 and raised her children here. After we married, my wife pointed out how Somerset was in the top five towns in New Jersey to retire and move to. And so we are here. How things have changed. The many warehouses that have been built where homes are located nearby are despicable. The dozens of 18-wheelers we share the road with just to get gas, go to ShopRite, or get onto 287 to see our kids has become atrocious. As a senior citizen, I am so concerned for our health, public safety, and our well-being from the truck noise and pollution and the effects it will have on us. My wife has asthma and has had lung surgery, and the pollution will be just awful for her and so many others. We truly fear if the B-9 warehouses are built across the street from us, we will have to move away. You have every right and reason to turn this proposed project down for the health and safe and public safety of all the residents of Franklin. Please vote for the well-being of the people. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Roberta Henry, and I live at 3209 Enclave Circle in Canal Walk. I'd like to thank the Planning Board for the opportunity to have residents speak on the B-9 warehouse proposal. I've been able to attend several meetings and find comments made by some totally outrageous. These include denying the potential health and safety effects, including increased noise that has been demonstrated from warehouse operations and their trailer trucks coming and going. As a nurse for 60 years, I can attest to these health effects from air pollution, noise, and stress. I'm sure you're all aware of the New Jersey State Planning Commission policy, which was established in September of 2022, and I'm not going to read the whole thing certainly, but it was very clear that the emissions of air pollutants and greenhouse gases from diesel-powered delivery vans and tractor trailers represent the most substantial environmental impact from warehouse facilities, plus the health effects, which were written very strongly: asthma, bronchitis, lung irritation, cancer, heart disease, respiratory illness, and premature deaths. Now, aside from the other huge unoccupied warehouses on Elizabeth and Cotton Tail, for example, we face still more, but this time along a designated scenic corridor and across from a 55 and older community. Canal Walk, with over 1,200 residents, many of whom you see here very angry and frustrated, trying to protect our beautiful community and hopefully continue to have the health to live long and enjoy it. The standing joke when you told people you were from New Jersey was the response, "What exit?" I don't want to say that I live in Somerset and have the response be, "Oh, warehouse city." I, along with numerous others, hope you will do the right thing and vote this application down. Thank you.
I don't know what this is. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dhanraj Maheshwari, M-A-H-E-S-W-A-R-I. I live at 28 Bryant Court, Somerset, in Canal Walk area. I'm not represented by any lawyer, and I'm not part of any group. As a resident of Franklin Township and one of the recipients of the township later notifying us that we are within 200 feet of proposed warehouse, I hope that I would have the same privileges, attorneys, to present my case to Planning Board and opportunities to present our handouts. And here's the handout. I'd like to give it to all applying members.
Can you push the mic up, please?
Okay. Yeah. On Monday, September 18th, we noticed very bad traffic on Randolph Road around 11:30 during non-peak hours. The handout shows the pictures taken over a span of 30 minutes, starting at 11:30 during non-peak hours. A long line of trucks parked and idling. We called the police to manage the traffic.
Sir. Sir. You've just provided to the Board and to applicant's counsel and objector's counsel, or you were, did you get yours? You're going to have to, for the purposes of the record, did you take these pictures?
Some of our friends, they took the pictures.
Are any of them here this evening?
The person who took the picture, sir, she's on a medical ground, is not able to attend because her husband is going through CT scan at this juncture, okay? So she requested us to show these pictures.
Okay. Let the record reflect that we have no, and before I start hearing from counsel for the applicant and/or the objector, these pictures are not authenticated. The individual who took these pictures is not here to indicate when they were taken, where they were taken, how they were taken, what they represent, et cetera. So for purposes of the record, the Board will accept the pictures, but understand, you can talk about what you may have seen on them, but the pictures in and of themselves are pictures, and the Board will accept them accordingly, but I will indicate it is not nearly as effective as having an individual describe how these were taken.
They are not manipulated. They are original pictures.
Go on with your comments, sir.
Okay. Anyway.
And for the record, I did pause it during that time period, so you have three and a half minutes left, okay?
Thank you.
During that time, police was called. Police indicated that they would look into it. We waited, our people waited, and to our surprise, police did not show up. This is an indication that 108 police officers are not enough to manage the current situation of township. Amazon has been there for the last two, three years, and we have this situation compound. It frightens me to think of what will happen if B-9 is allowed to operate the warehouse next to an adult and residential community. This is a public safety issue. As trucks were waiting or moving very slowly for more than 30 minutes to enter the Amazon warehouse, they did not shut off the engines to reduce the pollution. Amazon Warehouse is much further away from large residential community than the proposed B-9 project. The proposed B-9 project is less than 200 feet in radius to large concentration of residential homes like Summerfield and Canal Walk. This will affect well over 3,000 citizens in our area. The per-commission in concentration is a carcinogen scientifically proven to cause cancer as far as 1,000 feet from its origins. This is again, public health issue. Let me give you present traffic situation on Schoolhouse Road. A year ago, it used to take seven, eight minutes to reach to CVS from Canal Walk Gate. Now it takes about 10 to 12 minutes, again, because of increased truck traffic, because of new warehouse across from Dunkin' Donuts, which is now operational. Amazon facility is very big. Even there were seven, eight trucks, even though there were seven or eight trucks which are visible in the pictures on Randolph Road trying to enter inside. We did not get a chance, or our people did not get a chance, to see how many trucks were waiting on Western Canal Road trying to make a left turn on Randolph. The B-9 warehouse plan shows very little space beyond their 60 truck bays. There is not enough room for trucks to park inside. It is a spick facility, so we do not know whether it will be a distribution center or an actual warehouse, which will increase truck traffic even further. Under such circumstances, we will witness the same situation that is seen in these pictures of Randolph Road on daily basis on our Schoolhouse Road. The proposed truck entrance for B-9 warehouse is just about one-third mile away from the intersection of Randolph and Schoolhouse Road. There are three driveways in between to keep these driveways clear for strip mall and Summerfield development. One 18-wheeler truck approximately is approximately 72 feet long, so only few trucks will occupy the distance between Randolph and proposed B-9 entrance. Can you imagine how residents will be hindered with potential dangers of accidents between Metlers Road to Elizabeth Avenue on Schoolhouse Road because of its one-lane road each way, not meant for 18-wheeler traffic? This too, again, is a public safety issue. I would like to request you, please deny B-9 application as the welfare of your citizens is in danger of health and public safety for years to come. Thank you.
My name is Sabha Shah. Last name is S-H-A-H. Canal Walk resident. Actually, I'm speaking on behalf of another Canal Walk resident who could not be here because of family emergency. Her name is Joanne Kimpel. She's a Canal Walk resident from 2012.
Mr. Shah, you're speaking on behalf of yourself. You may be speaking on behalf of others, but for purposes of the record, you're speaking on behalf of yourself.
No problem.
Thank you.
My address is 59 Bryant Court. So I'm addressing today an issue, a water issue, that is being faced, okay? So the report from Princeton Hydro focused on a water spill from the pond at the B-9 property onto the Metlers Lane and across the Canal Walk. Nowhere has there been a mention of the origin of the water in the pond itself. Even during the hot summer days and months, the pond level remains relatively the same. Although no one stocks the pond, lots of folks go fishing there for perch and other small types of fish. How do these fishes get in there? Well, one suggestion for the source of the pond is that it may start with underground springs. The B-9 property presently has over 450 trees. Many of them are large with deep roots firmly planted in the land. If these trees were removed, the surrounding land would, of course, be a marshland. Paving over this land to install two concrete foundations for the warehouses causes one to worry, where will the water go? The springs may find another outlet for the water. The basins and the dam that are currently proposed may not completely solve the issue. Who's going to be the one regulating the dam? We know Canal Walk property, some of them have a high water table. During the hurricane Ida, several homes with the basements got flooded, even the clubhouse had a water in their basement. If a strong storm occurs again and there is a power outage, the sub pump will not function, and the damage could be severe. Another issue that has not been discussed is that of Lindy Lake. Lindy Lake is situated behind the small house on the Schoolhouse and Western Canal Road. Access to the lake is on a small road called Lindy Lane of the Western Canal Road. Lindy Lake appears in an old edition of Hanks' Somerset County map. The lake can also be seen one using Google Earth. The map shows that the lake with few tributaries running across the Schoolhouse Road onto the property of Canal Walk, across the Metlers, ending about where the pond is. I have the pictures of the, from the Hanks' map that I will pass on. So the big question, what is the connection between the Lindy Lake and the pond? Does one feed into the other? So the pond is going to be there. The water in the pond will be fed from the Lindy Lake or the tributaries. And if the warehouse is built, there will be runoff from the pond more often than we think it is going to be, creating more danger for the Canal Walk property for flooding. So we definitely request to deny, deny the permit to build the pond. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shah.
Yes.
Two questions.
Sure.
There are two documents that you provided. One, which appears to be a two-page document, which says at the top of one page, Lindy Lake connected to Pond on B-9 property. Where is that from?
This is from the Hacks' map.
Speak into the mic, please, sir.
I'm sorry. This is from the Hacks' Somerset County map, an old Hacks' Somerset County map.
How old and who produced this document?
There was a copy of the old map that we have.
How old?
Prior to what the current Hacks' map is. It's probably about 10, 12 years old. I don't have exact dates.
The other document, which appears to be three pages, double-sided of pictures with the top, Metlers Lane, Metlers Road flooded on April 20th, April 30th, 2023. Who took these pictures?
Those are taken by the resident.
No.
Yeah, taken by, yeah, taken by Joanne.
Mr. Bernstein.
Your turn. For the purposes of the record, sir, you want to come up and indicate where these are. I'm not suggesting they're going into evidence. I'm clearly trying to get for the record, exactly for the Board, what the basis of this is. State your name, sir, full name for the record, and your address.
Stephen Brant, 22 Bryant Court. I am not a member of SEWAG.
You took these pictures, sir?
Yeah, the pictures, which I shared, were from April... They're from, it says April 30th, where there was, there's a police vehicle that was blocking the road and, well, because to protect people from their cars getting the underside flooded.
For the purposes of the record, to indicate where on Metlers Road this is...
Yeah, so this is on Metlers Road between Schoolhouse and Weston Road, about a third of the way down, right where the pond comes out. And I can show the pictures on my phone, the originals.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to ask the public commenter a question.
Is Mr. Shah done with his...
The gentleman who took the photos.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure.
Yes. Can you tell me, you know, you took these images...
Say your name for the record, counsel.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I forgot. My appearance has not been stated yet. I'm John DeLuca of the firm Boris Goldenfellow, Vignolo, Hyman &amp; Stahl. I'm filling in for Peter Lamb for tonight. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, B-9 Schoolhouse Owner LLC. Mr. Brant, you took Dr. Brand, my apologies. Brandt, my apologies, Dr. Brandt, you, you took these photographs on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
You're going to have to stand in front of the mic, Dr. Brandt.
Yes, I, I took them, although I don't know if they're the exact same pictures that are.
All right. Thank you. I, so can you tell me, have you seen any flooding like this on Metlers Lane since, since these photographs were taken?
Yes.
What, what was the date of the most recent flooding?
I cannot recall, but.
Okay. Have you seen flooding since the applicant made a contribution to fix the township's pipe underneath Metlers Lane?
Yes, although just, it's more minor flooding, but just covering the road.
Okay, but you, you also stated that you're not aware of the date, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brandt.
I'll also just request that the, the board remind members of the public to identify whether they are or are not represented by counsel or are or are not a member of C WAG.
So far, they've been doing it, but thanks, they for their reminder. Who's next?
Charles Inghilterra.
Oh, that was real good. Are you Italian? And I don't have to spell it. No, it is Inghilterra, I N G H I L T E R R A. I live at eighty-six Saratoga Court. First of all, Dan.
Move the mic closer to you, sir. Thank you.
Usually, people can hear me, boss, but anyway, thank you again for all the time that each of you put into these sessions. But I want to tell you something. It's that you know what the right thing to do is. Forget the law, forget you're going to be sued because everybody sues. No, no, Ms. Orsini, listen for a second, okay? The point is, the Franklin Township made a mistake. They basically admitted to that, right? They basically said, oh, we really screwed up. We didn't think we were going to get these many warehouse applications. And in their bid for greed to get revenue that this man helped them with, all right, and he did his job, the other guys perhaps didn't. But the point is, you know what the right thing, the town council is saying, hey, wait a minute, we're not, we're not happy about this. You saw a young lady at the last meeting came up, I thought she lived in Summerfields, that she was going to say, please, my children. She turned out to be, in my opinion, Mr. Attorney, a plant that I, I represent the commission of whatever. And you did see our attorney, our mayor respond to that. The point is, they're admitting that they made a mistake. Don't make the same mistake. You have a responsibility not to the robber barons of this country, you have a responsibility to us. Stand up and be counted. That's not the phrase I was going to use. I was going to tell you to grow, but I did not because of the ladies here and in the audience. So you have a hard decision. But you know what's right and what's wrong, right? Your parents and grandparents had the guts to stand up. I am not a member of C WAG. I am not represented by their attorney. I'm not a member of C WAG because, in my opinion, they're too mellow, all right? All right. I am not represented by the Canal Walk directors and their attorney because I believe they're wrong. My opinion. Charles Inghilterra, eighty-six Saratoga Court, all right? The point is, and this young kid over here, what does he know? All right? Come on, somebody give some money, somebody writes his report and he comes out here. You've heard testimony from people. I'm not going to go through the metrics, two feet it is, ten feet it that, crap. Stand up and be counted. You have a job as responsible leaders. How much time do I have left? Two minutes? Ladies and gentlemen, no. Thank you, thank you very much.
Barbara Burns.
My name is Barbara Burns. I live at seventy-nine Haverhill Place in Somerset. I've lived in this town for twenty-five years. That's a hard act to follow, but, but it was kind of in the vein that I was going to speak about. There's a lot of things that I can mention, the pollution from the noise and the constant beeping as you back up, that would drive me crazy, air pollution. The water, it's too close to the DNR Canal, the Millstone, Raritan River, six-mile-run Aquifer, and you can go on and on, the pollution, that pond, it could very well be a spring to pollute that and those beautiful trees would be a sin, in my opinion. And these oversized trucks on our local roads, I mean, coming through Manville today, I was following an eighteen wheeler and he turned down, you know, the road that I would usually, the local roads that I would take, and now I have to follow eighteen wheelers. It's not good. And I was wondering why Franklin Township can't just buy land and for preserved land. This township was supposed to be noted for trails and parks and bike routes, and I noticed Van Cleef is a very nicely paved road with bike markings on it, and we have the, the bike runs and everything. I don't know how trucks is going to do with all that. So obviously, it's, I don't hear anybody here that wants the warehouse. Everybody seems to be unanimously against it. It's the wrong thing at the wrong place, and the builders and the planning board should not build it. And how about building it in Manville or Bridgewater or somewhere else, but not here? And let me just say, no warehouse and do it for the karma, because I do believe in karma. I believe in, this gentleman didn't say karma, but I'm a firm believer in it because you got to live with yourself. And obviously, there's no room for this warehouse here. Thank you.
I'm just waiting for the conversation to stop over there before you start the timing. Stephen Brandt, twenty-two Bryant Court, not a member of C WAG. What I want to bring up to the attention is something I think that hasn't been brought up or maybe made clear to the board. Firstly, I noticed that Mr. Lamford tried to say that or imply that Ascena Corridor does not exist because of the houses on Canal Walk that are between Schoolhouse and Weston Canal Road. Well, firstly, those that are closer to Weston on Bayard are completely hidden at this point by conifer trees and can't be seen. And there's five houses on Bryant Court that backs up. You can only see the second floors. There's a berm there, there's trees there, quite a different from what's planned on the other side. But most importantly, I looked at the Ascena Corridor regulations and they say, under exemptions, detached one or two dwelling unit buildings are exempt from Ascena Corridor. So indeed, the Ascena Corridor exists. But more importantly, I think if you go to Google Maps and look at, say, Five Metlers Road and look at the Ascena Corridor there, you'll notice on the west side bordering is a paved walkway that's the width of two side, standard sidewalks or so. And any given evening or morning, you'll see residents of Summerfields with their young children or Canal Walk walking in this area. And during the summer and the weekends, it's, you know, my house backs up there, I, that maybe five minutes goes by on a nice day that I don't see residents there. So it is indeed a very serene natural environment, the way it looks now, and that's the intent of the Ascena Corridor. And it's quite important to preserve this for the benefit of the two communities at Summerfields and Canal Walk, but more importantly, from the residents of Franklin Township, Ascena Corridor that has daily improved our lives and all who travel on Metlers on their way south to the jewel of Franklin Township, which is Colonial Park. By permitting this warehouse with its forty-plus foot structure that cannot be hidden, whose noise cannot be abated, with its pollution and truck traffic going twenty-four, seven, and endangering the lives of the citizens and the families, you'll end the wonderful reality that we have at Metlers Road, the Ascena Corridor, with its beautiful walkway on the west side. And, and lastly, because I was queried, I, I looked at texts and July twenty-fifth was the last day that, that I was aware that the canal, that Metlers Road was flooded. And also, one problem that we have had Canal Walk is flooding of the basements. Mary Goodman testified that the water studies for B nine were not done properly. They weren't done in the spring when the water is most treacherous to the, to the problems with flooding. And also, there was a problem that, with trees on the planned berm. So I think that, that also, without having proper studies done, you're risking the further problem with flooding in our homes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Enid Doyle, E N, my name, my name is Enid Doyle, E N I D D O Y L E. I am not represented by C WAG. I live at thirty-seven Bryant Court, Somerset, New Jersey. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight about B nine's application. I have come to all the meetings in regard to this application. First, I would like to make some comments about this meeting room. The people in the back can't see who is talking and it's hard to hear what they are saying. You have to be sitting up very close to see and hear. Most everyone here has been coming to all these meetings. You must realize how important it is to all of us, even though it's a thirty-five-minute ride in the dark when most people over fifty-five do not like to drive at night. I myself have to rely on someone else to drive me. There would have been, there would have been three more, three times more people here if these meetings were closer to home. I know many things have been brought up about the positives and negatives of this application. If you put them down on paper, I'm sure you would see the negatives outweigh the positives. A lot of untruths have been told. At one meeting, Link was supposed to make a three-D board, which would have shown exactly how things would look. Of course, they didn't do this because they really didn't want everyone to see how large it was and the huge impact it would have for all the residents of the Somerset, not only the two large communities across the street and the two sides of the warehouse. These communities pay much more in taxes than these warehouses will pay. Colonial Park is around the corner and there are schools in the area. This is the wrong location for these warehouses. Link showed photos of the landscaping and trees they would plant to make the area and buildings look more appealing and hide them. These trees twenty-four feet apart wouldn't do much good. Trying to use fool-the-eye photos showing a perspective picture of the trees that really do not show the true picture, where eighteen-foot trees would never hide a forty-foot building. This three-D board would have also helped in the driveway discussion to show where these driveways would be and the traffic flow. A photo would not show the true traffic nightmares this would cause. The location is more than three miles away from two eighty-seven. There are empty warehouses in the area and they could, they could use those. The negatives are numerous. The roads are much too narrow to accommodate any more traffic on Schoolhouse Road. Taking down any of the trees in the area would ruin the Ascena Corridor and the whole natural character of the area. Traffic, noise, road erosion, flooding, air pollution, et cetera, are just a few of the negatives. In closing, this is the wrong location for these warehouses. There are only negatives, no positives. It will affect the health and safety and quality of the life of the people living in Somerset. People matter.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Byrne, B E I R N E. I am not represented by C WAG. My husband and I, Jim, live reside at twenty-six Bryant Court, the property closest to the proposed warehouse. Five years ago, we decided to retire to an ideal community in a pastoral setting called Canal Walk. Instead, we are now informed that we will be living next to a sprawling warehouse. Our home's bedroom, den, and kitchen windows face the warehouse because we are directly across the street. Beep, beep, beep. That is the sound Link wants senior citizens to live with twenty-four, seven. Will I ever be able to open my windows for fresh air without the sound of trucks backing up and worrying about safety and worrying about pollution? Will I be able to sleep at night undisturbed or enjoy my backyard without constant noise? Will sleep deprivation cause mental and physical health issues? Would any of you want to live at my home? Would you want your parents to buy my house? Will you be able to sleep at night knowing that people you represent cannot sleep? These narrow roads are inadequate for the monster trucks that are turning on Schoolhouse Road, causing accidents and massive delays. This is a picture of the signpost at Schoolhouse and Metlers. It doesn't seem to be up anymore. Oh, it doesn't seem to be up anymore. This is at the corner of Metlers and Schoolhouse, and my husband took this picture. This is a picture of Weston Canal Road and a truck attempting to turn the corner, going into the next lane, and this was taken by my neighbor.
Ma'am, do you have copies of these pictures?
I do.
Do you have copies for the board and the objectors' council and the applicants' council?
Yes, I do.
Could you please pass them out first and then we'll deal with them? And if anybody is running a scenario with a backing-up beeper, could you please turn it off? Thank you.
Oh, they, they want it turned off.
Folks, 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 while you may find this amusing, I remind you, this is the board, the board ultimately has to make the decision, the board ultimately will have to defend the decision, and with all due respects, the court isn't going to hear nor see any of the amusement to this. So thank you all.
So this is what we are seeing by the side of the road, these downsides. Yes, they're coming.
Thank you.
But what could be worse, perhaps a human being? The other photograph shows the wide berth needed by trucks to navigate these turns. They invade oncoming lanes. Accidents are bound to happen, and I do not see the driver of a car having a chance. And what about the flooding on Metlers? An already existing problem will be exasperated by a huge concrete structure replacing grasslands. The runoff will go directly into our basements and homes. The retirement house of our dreams has now turned into a nightmare. We have given you the data necessary to fight this monstrosity at our own expense. There are several locations more adapted for this proposed structure. We are your constituents. Your responsibility as lawmakers is to us and not some faceless corporation. We are employing you to do as much as possible to curtail the construction of this warehouse. Thank you. Thank you.
When I get them, you can have them.
Nick Ciampa?
I have not received a copy of the pictures.
That's all right, neither has the table either, so.
Nick Ciampa, CI.
Mr. Chappa, please. Mr. Lieberman, Chair. They're all the same, apparently. No, this is what we were just handed. We don't even know what they are. You want to? No, we're not. Thank you, Mr. Chappa.
Nick Ciampa, CI, A-M-P-A, 38 Freedom Lane, Somerset. I am unaffiliated, unrepresented. Every two or three years, there is a one-and-a-half-to-two-foot snowfall in our area. Where and how will such a snowfall be cleared? Can't be plowed away because the parking area where the trucks are is closed in. That's something that I don't believe has been mentioned before, but I think it's something we should all keep in mind, that that's going to be a difficult situation. Also, the township or county will have to widen some roads where they intersect with a warehouse entrance. I believe the last speaker pointed out how badly trucks go into the wrong lane when making turns. Now, I suppose it's theoretically possible for a seventy-two-foot-long tractor-trailer to make the turn, but my observations over several weeks or months have been that that doesn't often happen. Usually, the trucks go into the wrong, to the other lane. I cede my time to the next person.
Vikram Bhargava, I will even spell my first name. There's many issues. First, the quality of life issues. Number one. One big reason many of us moved from neighboring states or within New Jersey was to get away from the relatively urban areas to this mostly rural area surrounded by farms and deep woods. The builder clearly pointed out to an aesthetically pleasing structure surrounded by tall, mature trees, blocking out both the view of the building and the coming and going of heavy trucks. They further claim that these trees will also provide sound insulation. Even if all of this is true, let us talk about the time it'll take to get to this heaven-on-earth situation. Assuming that a permit to build is issued today, it may be many months before the construction work actually starts. When it does, imagine the scene directly across the street from many of our residents. Trucks coming and going, noisy equipment clearing the woods, constant din of heavy earth-moving equipment, support columns being driven down, hundreds of saws in action, banging of hammers, and on and on and on. This accompanied with piles and piles of construction material, cut-down trees, mounds of dug-out dirt, rivers of mud flowing down the streets, and on and on. This may go on for a couple of years. Only when most of the construction work is completed and the heavy equipment moves out can the new trees be planted. It may take another five years or more before the trees grow to the height where they will provide the coverage they were planned to provide. A large percentage of our residents are in our eighties, including some in late eighties and some even in their nineties. Most of them may not live to see the day when this supposed utopia finally comes into existence. In other words, they are condemned to this unsightly commotion, day in and day out, for the rest of their lives. Quality of life issue number two. As the head of our supplier selection team at Motorola, my team and I visited small and large suppliers for our products. One of the requirements for approval for any supplier was to have a climate-controlled storage for our tools and products. They didn't have it, they didn't get our business. Currently, air conditioning is planned only for approximately 3,000 square feet for office space. There are no plans to provide air conditioning for the warehouses. It may not be long before the tenants will require air conditioning for the whole warehouse. Imagine these heavy-duty air conditioners running day in and day out during the summer. Industrial air conditioning units, fans, and coolers emit up to eighty-two decibels of sound depending on the model. To put this in context, a police whistle or a vacuum cleaner typically emits only seventy dB. Twelve dB is more than a vacuum cleaner. The neighbors across the street can say goodbye to opening their back doors and windows on a pleasant summer evening. If the planning board plans to provide an approval for the warehouse, they need to make sure that no air conditioner can be installed for the warehouse in the future. This alone may discourage the builder from building a warehouse at this location. Finally, a major safety issue. Warehouse fires are not uncommon. When they do occur, they can be pretty catastrophic with possible explosions based on what is stored in the warehouses. So the question is, what are the evacuation plans in case of a fire for those living in the community, especially disabled seniors in multi-story condos? Even if there's no fire, are we supposed to live in the fear of a fire for the rest of our lives? Before approval is granted, we need to make satisfactory fire prevention, control, and evacuation plans. Please do the right thing. Vote this down.
Mr. Cohen, I know your name is next, but as you heard, he's going to move you. I just wanted you to know that I do see your name on here. Kent Coping?
Kent Coping, 43 Bennett's Lane, Somerset, K-O-P-I-N-G, forty-one-year resident at that location. And I'm not here to really speculate on, you know, what the plans are and what might happen. I'm here to attest to what I observe, living the nearest businesses and warehouses on Veronica Avenue, who are a quarter-mile from me, to a half-mile and further, sitting on my porch tonight with the heavy line of traffic on Bennett's Lane and all that noise, it's only seventy-five feet from my porch, I could still hear the whir of the air handlers a quarter-to-a-half-mile away, along with all that local noise. So I request that you deny the permit. You're talking about planning intense warehousing next to residents, and you cannot, I can't, I can tell you, you cannot deny the fact that that noise will impact every one of these residents. That's all. Thank you.
Alex Karazi, and I guess Michael Hampton, if you want to get up behind him.
Good evening, Franklin residents. My name is Alex Karazi, K-H-A-R-A-Z-I. I live at 14 Margaret Drive, Somerset. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to make a short statement. I am president of Franklin Township Interfaith Council. I am a member of Human Relations Commission and Dr. Martin Luther King Foundation, and I run a private school in town. I have lived here for over thirty-seven years and plan to live here for the rest of my life. I call Franklin my home. Over the years, we have seen this board under your leadership to approve many good projects that created win-win situation for the community and the owners. However, B-9 is not such a project. In our township, we have over seventy houses of worship, and in these houses of worship, we often hear the messages of "love your neighbor and care for them." Unfortunately, the owners of B-9 Warehouse has ignored these messages, and they really do not care about the quality of life and the wishes of seventy thousand residents of this township. Mr. Chairman, we believe the planning board recognizes the amazing senior community members we have. Their tireless effort to stand up for the rights of seventy thousand residents is greatly appreciated. I also have a picture to show. This is a picture of my beautiful grandson, who was born yesterday, and Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board members. I really want my grandson to be able to drive in our township without running over by a truck or being concerned about the pollution. So please, do not disappoint the community and especially our seniors, and vote no to this project. Thank you, God bless you, and God bless Franklin Township. For the record, I can show the picture to the attorney of that, so hopefully, hopefully he will convince his client to drop this project. Thank you.
Congratulations. I don't think we need to introduce that. And if you want your grandson Alex to drive, I just don't think you're going to get a license right yet.
Michael Hampton, H-A-M-P-T-O-N. I would just ask that you guys monitor my time, because the boos are coming. Oh, 319 Schilling Drive, Somerset. I sat here in the back tonight, not knowing what I was going to say, but knowing I was going to say something. The last time I spoke on this issue, our mayor, sitting to the left of me, tried to have me arrested, and a lot of these folks applauded him. So I'll say this. This town is made up by sixteen percent senior citizens, based on the last census. Twenty-five percent of the town is made up of people eighteen and under. Our school district is getting funded between the town and the state, quarter of a billion dollars, mainly because we have nine thousand students, four thousand of those students come from homes that are considered below or right at the poverty level. This warehouse could employ up to four hundred potential residents. That would make up ten percent, potentially, of the parents of those kids that are currently living at the poverty level. Now, many of these people don't go to the town meetings, I do. I've heard people for the last months over the summer talk about issues with food in this town, issues with affordability for housing in this town, and we need jobs. We have empty lots in Kmart, which the town keeps promising, "Oh, we'll deliver," they're not, they're not. Everything in life is an investment, and I'm going to say something that I shouldn't have to say to people twice my age at thirty-four years old. You bought a bad investment. Nobody has laid one legal claim to why the warehouse should be voted against. I've heard pleas for the environment and the noise where I live, off of Demont Lane and the Carriage Homes. This group should probably remember when they built that park with the lovely lights and the stadium sound equipment, that the seniors in my neighborhood, ninety-five percent seniors in my neighborhood, they implored the town to not do that. I remember Mr. Kramer's remarks, I remember a lot of people's remarks at that time, and essentially, it boiled down to you got to suck it up because, you know, it benefits the kids. Well, so does this. It indirectly benefits the kids, it indirectly benefits the town, it indirectly will help lower property, I'm sorry, lower property taxes. Hold my time, please. I won't continue until somebody tells me to stop, so.
Continue.
Okay, so, the reason is, if you listen to the first part of my statement, part of the reason your poverty taxes are so high is because you pay so much for an education system in this town that can't get wrangled in. Part of the reason you're paying so much is because there's a whole section of this town that this room likes to ignore. It's called the other side of Franklin Boulevard that looks like it's poverty-stricken. No matter how much you want to gentrify parts of Hamilton Street, okay, for those of us that grew up in this town, did not decide to move here ten years ago, I have friends that are barely able to raise their kids in this town, I have friends that cannot find jobs and are moving out of this town. So yes, I do feel bad that this is going to happen, but it's going to happen. Whether or not they vote no, and I'm assuming they all will, because judging by the body language of half the panel, while most of you were speaking, they were on their phones, some of them looked like they were nodding out, my assumption is they're going to do what the Democrats sitting to my left want them to do, which is vote no. And they're going to appease you all. But what no one is going to explain to you is this is going to go to court in a conservative, as much as everybody wants to say New Jersey's a blue state, it's a conservative court system. You are going to lose, the warehouse is going to get built, you are not going to vote out the council that allowed it to happen to you in the first place, and by the time it's built, it'll be too late, and you'll revisit this issue three, four years from now. The only recourse that you actually have, let them approve it, and then, listen, they don't have a tenant yet. You have the ability to boycott, to protest, call amongst the younger folks, and we'll come out there with you so that no tenant ever shows up. But, folks, ladies, please, let the gentleman finish.
Let's be courteous, nobody did that to anybody who was...
I was born and raised in Franklin Township, none of this scares me, none of these folks concern me, and the beauty of our country is, no matter how much you get upset, I am speaking on behalf of people that are like, not everyone in this town lives in a fifty-five and over development, and that's ridiculous for the last speaker, who is the head of the faith council, to even insinuate he speaks for seventy thousand people. That's nonsense. And you all were not elected officials. You don't owe the constituents a damn thing. Your job is to follow the letter of the law and not get our town involved in a fifteenth or sixteenth lawsuit that, guess what? Someone has to pay for it, and it's not Phil Kramer. Last I checked, taxes, sir, and I paid my fair share, probably more than the majority of people sitting in this room.
Arnold Schmidt, Joe Danielson, you can't go up behind him.
Good evening. Arnold Schmidt, 134 Hickory Road, Somerset. On page one of the applicant's traffic impact statement, it identifies large wheel-based vehicles as delivery trucks, refuse trucks, and emergency vehicles. On page eight, it identifies large wheel-based vehicles as tractor-trailers. Based on this information, it's clear that tractor-trailers are delivery trucks. On page ten of the noise section of the applicant's environmental impact assessment, it says, quote, "delivery and trash collection trucks will unload and pick up during daytime hours," end quote. So based on these terms that the applicant submitted in their application, delivery and trash collection trucks, including tractor-trailers, will be unloading and picking up during daytime hours. I point out this application's unloading and pickup schedule not necessarily as a full accounting of the facility's hours of operation, but about how this application details the limited hours that these very large vehicles will be allowed to unload and pick up, clog our local roads, and pollute our air. What we need now is a definition of daytime hours. I think most people would... I think most people would agree that daytime is not 10:00 p.m., or likely not even 7:00 p.m. But this applicant purposely using the vague, nonspecific terminology of daytime hours, it appears this application is deficient. How can we expect this board to approve something that is undefined? In the applicant's three-sentence conclusions section of their forty-one-page traffic impact study, the final sentence states, quote, "The site plan as proposed provides for good circulation throughout the site," end quote. The problem is, similar to the applicant's noise report that I will address next, the traffic expert's conclusions section focuses on the traffic issues on the proposed site, avoiding the obvious question, "What impact will this proposed facility have on the surrounding roadways off-site?" The applicant doesn't address that at all in their conclusions, a total avoidance of the real traffic concerns here, off-site, the surrounding residential neighborhood roads. In the applicant's environmental impact assessment report noise section, right after the sentence about delivery trucks and trash collection trucks unloading and picking up during daytime hours, the next sentence states, quote, "Therefore, in our estimation, ambient noise will not adversely impact the quality of life on the site or in close proximity thereof," end quote. So how did the applicant conclude that the ambient noise will not adversely impact the quality of life on the site or in close proximity thereof? Was analysis performed? Modeling? If yes, why haven't we heard from the professionals that performed that work or seen their reports that came to this conclusion? If analysis was not performed, again, how was this conclusion determined? Also, the concern here isn't about the noise on the site, it's, as I just stated, about off-site, the impact on the residential neighbors. The applicant had a landscape architect provide expert testimony with what they considered conclusive reporting to show buffering, aesthetics, and more. The applicant has a traffic impact study prepared by licensed engineers that provides what they believe is conclusive information. And yet, for noise, the applicant uses the words "therefore in our estimation, ambient noise will not adversely impact the quality of life on the site or in close proximity thereof." We know that a noise expert is not required for this application. However, if the applicant is going to make a conclusive statement that claims, in their estimation, ambient noise will not have an adverse impact on the quality of life, presumably on the neighboring residents, I submit that the applicant must back up what they say with something concrete, something professional, something other than the applicant's subjective opinion. I further suggest that the applicant purposely did not bring a noise expert because they knew they could not defend their unsubstantiated environmental impact assessment noise report claims. There are many unanswered, unresolved questions in this application related to traffic, landscaping, and noise. Therefore, I implore this board to reject this application by voting not to approve it. Thank you.
I have a question for the commenter. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sir? Mr. Schmidt, are you a member of the Environmental Commission?
I am. I'm representing... I am not representing the Environmental Commission or any other committees or councils that I'm on. I'm here representing myself as a resident.
Okay. Can you at least tell me whether you're aware that the Environmental Commission issued two reports in connection with this application?
Yes.
Are you able to reconcile those two reports where the initial that was issued was fairly benign, and then after we reduced the size of the building and added a fair amount of landscaping, a second report was issued, which recommended denial of the application? Can you reconcile those reports?
Now, do I object to this? It's beyond the scope.
Yeah. I'm not going to.
If he chooses to answer, he can choose to answer. Mr. Schmidt chooses not to answer because he's not here on behalf of the commission? He can do so accordingly.
I didn't hear the question.
My question was about the two Environmental Commission reports that were issued in connection with this application, which you acknowledge you're aware of that they were issued. I'm asking, can you reconcile those reports? The first of which was benign, and the second of which recommended denial application. That second report was only issued after we reduced the size of the building and added a significant amount of landscaping. Can you reconcile those reports?
I don't recall what was in those reports, and like I said, I am not here representing the Environmental Commission. I am totally separate from the Environmental Commission. I am answering based on the facts that I have come up with by reviewing your application and finding many inaccuracies, many, many things that just didn't add up in your application. So that was all after months ago where the Environmental Commission made comments.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Good evening, planning board. Point of inquiry, Mr. Bernstein. What? Joe Danielson. I just want to...
Spell your last name.
I object to giving you an address. I don't think the Open Public Records Meetings Act gives you the authority to require me to have an address. I'd just like to lodge that objection.
Please...
But if you like, I live at Block 473, Lot 16.
Thank you. And for purposes of the record, if you have an issue with the designation of addresses for purpose of the Open Public Meetings Act, you might want to take it up with the legislature.
I also object to the five-minute limitation.
Joe, that's what we're doing. And again, I know it's silly season, which is like the one thing that somebody said that I actually agree with what they said. But let's keep it not theatrics. Let's keep it the facts, or whatever you want to apply. We gave us a good show the last time.
I'm offended by that. I'm not going to take your advice. Nothing here tonight has been theatrics. That's an insult to me and everybody in this room.
Not yet. I'm just warning you because the last time it was...
Don't warn me, Chairman. Chairman, don't warn me.
I am, because I have a right to, Joe.
No, you don't.
Yeah, I do.
No, you don't.
I do.
There's nothing here tonight that's theatrical. That's an insult. It's unprofessional.
Not yet. I'm warning you not to do it.
I don't care, not yet.
And you're well on your way. You're proving my point.
No. I'm not taking that advice. Back to my point of inquiry, Mr. Bernstein. After careful review of the environmental impact report, it's clearly that that report is grossly incomplete. How is it that this application was allowed to move forward with a required, by our statute, a required report being so incomplete?
Of course, I can only assume, Mr. Danielson, since this predates my involvement in this application, that it was determined by the planning department of the township that the application was complete. Whether or not the board ultimately finds the information provided to be sufficient is a totally different issue from whether or not it was considered complete. And I believe, if you recall, since you were here, I think, for that meeting, it didn't come to an issue until after the fact, when a representative on behalf of the applicant made comments asking for the EIS to be somewhat revised.
Okay, so when you came on board with the planning board, did the incompleteness of the environmental impact report be brought to your attention?
It wasn't an issue, and it's after the fact.
Who determined that this application was deemed complete with an inaccurate environmental impact report?
Mr. Bernstein, you asked us to remind you if you broke your own rules, and you're breaking your own rules right now, so...
That's a great point, Sammy. So, Joe, why don't you... Like, we're not going into Q and A. You can make a statement that you don't think that the application should have been deemed complete, and that's perfectly logical. We'll give you your five minutes, and then if we want to, you know...
Well, I started off by making a point of inquiry. I just want to know, how incomplete does a required report have to be before you determine it's incomplete?
Answer you at the end of the five minutes.
Okay. So, planning board members, Dr. Chase, Dr. Orsini, Mr. Thomas, I sat on this board with you twenty years ago, up until 2014. But twenty years ago... There's... We had an application in front of us, and we were surrounded at that time by what seemed to be an army of attorneys telling us we had to vote for an application. I'm sure you remember the Bennetts Veronica property. They told us we had no choice. We had to vote in favor of it. And I told you, they're all wrong. All those attorneys were wrong. And we here in Franklin understand a judge may give us our town away.
Yeah, and he is a member of the public. He's allowed to speak. Your name doesn't have to be on the list to speak. We do this...
Is my five-minute limit not up?
Please, sir.
A judge may inevitably give our town away, but we hold our ground. Always, every day, we hold our ground. And over twenty years later, that development's still not built. And for good reason. We put our skin into it. We put our heart into it. We did the right thing. We voted that application down, and we sent it right back to hell where it belonged. This application's no different. If you look at the environmental impact report, or the lack of a noise study, the traffic report, the site plan, all filled with holes, all providing more questions than a reasonable, prudent application should ever be coming to a planning board. Even when we examine their sworn licensed professionals, they refuse to answer questions. The environmental impact report, as bad as it was, had the audacity to make comment of taxes and our Board of Education in a environmental impact report. That's how desperate they were. It was so hard asking them questions, it would have been easier asking Bob Menendez where the cash was. And Dr. Orsini, you spent an entire career researching cancer cures, saving possibly millions of lives, and that's very honorable. And by the way, thank you for your service to our country. But these lives right now are the same valuable lives that you could help save. I'm telling you right now, if I were on the planning board, I would say, based upon the evidence and the testimony, or the lack thereof, I vote no. Thank you.
So, Joe, stay tuned, because as promised, and thank you for your comments. Look, we've been friends for many years. I do understand the season we're in, and I was sort of... And I would do the same if Brian came up, because, you know, we got good theatrics the last time, and what you did tonight was perfectly fine.
It's always perfectly fine.
So, can I ask our attorney to explain to you what the standard is for deeming an application complete? Because it's a good question. I don't think many people understand it.
It was a great question.
You're never wrong.
All I hear is my mother's voice in my head right now.
And for the record, your mom would have been out here with a resident, Ken Alwak.
For purposes of the record, ladies and gentlemen, there seems to be a misconception on the issue of deeming something complete. There is a checklist promulgated by Franklin Township, as there is pretty much in every municipality in the state that has land use, which requires an applicant, whether it is a single-family home, or a two-hundred-plus-thousand-square-foot warehouse, et cetera, et cetera, to meet in terms of obligations to provide materials for the planning department to review. The documents do not have to be accurate, unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be, but they do have to be compliant. And an environmental impact statement apparently was provided to the point that the planning board believed it complied with the checklist. Complying with the checklist only means that you get yourself before this board. You then have to make proofs to this board through witness testimony, contradicted by objector testimony, and the like in the public, as to whether or not the proof or the underlying aspects of the statement, or the plans, or the report, or the testimony are in fact accurate and meet the requirements. So I want everybody to understand that the bar is exceedingly low for determining completeness. And when the legislature changed the law, and the courts changed the law, turning it from time of decision to time of application, the issues as to that... The issues as to being deemed incomplete become harder for the planning board to pick up, and for the planning department. And I don't envy Mr. Healy, Mr. Mazza, et cetera, for going through this and every other application that they're going through here that I'm experiencing elsewhere, where we are trying to make sure that these things are at least marginally compliant. And if you recall, as I stated a few minutes ago, the environmental impact statement really did not become an issue until testimony was given by the author of the statement, who indicated that there were problems in it raised by Mr. Lieberman, raised by members of the board, et cetera, at which point it was determined that they would, my words, strike pieces of the statement out that did not necessarily, or could not necessarily, be supported, which is obviously something the board will take into account when it makes its ultimate determination. But whether or not you agree that the statement was in and of itself complete, the planning department determined it was under the provisions of the checklist, and therefore it moved forward, as did the applicant lives and dies by whatever they put in that report unless they amend it.
Mr. Chairman, can I bring something to your attention on the subject?
Sure.
All right. On the environmental impact report, the reason I brought that up, out of all the reports, and putting aside the shenanigans of the site plan last time I spoke, is you don't know... You don't have the list of authors of that. You don't have the criteria or the qualifications of those authors. You don't even know if there's a conflict of interest or any qualifications of people who contributed to that report, nor can you examine them. That should worry you.
Well, not really true, Joe. So on every report, just like plans, plans have to be sealed and signed by the preparer of the plan. The environmental impact statement was, you know, it was signed by the gentleman who testified on behalf of it.
He signed it, but he had no environmental qualifications. You understand, right?
And that was one of the reasons why we struck some of the language, because we identified that, and it's in the testimony, I recall it clearly, that he could not defend the statement that he made. And that's the purpose of a board hearing, is that we should establish that. So, I mean, Alex's grandson could write the environmental report, and, you know, most likely, we wouldn't... We would identify that as something that was probably not meeting the criteria of something that we could believe. I mean, that's why, you know, the planning board is a quasi-judicial body, hence the gavel, and they, you know, would make that determination through the testimony and exchange given.
Well, listen, Chairman, you've seen better applications, professional applications, that didn't show up with such deficiencies and arrogance. This is...
I have to object. We're going back and forth over the same issue over and over again. The commenter asked a question.
Actually, object to what? This is public portion.
It was adequately answered by the board attorney and the board chairman.
He can object. He can object. We can register that objection, and that's perfectly fine.
Objection is registered. Based upon what? What did I say that was objectionable?
The record reflects what it was. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the commenter has made his comments.
I agree. I think we've given an answer, and you have a right to object. That's registered in the recording. What your reason for objection is, is I'm sure that, you know, whatever it is...
Asked and answered.
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, we have everybody on the list that has been called. I don't know if you want to move on to Mr. Cohen or Mr. Lieber... I forget which order you put them in.
Yeah, sure. Nine-ten, we're back in session. We are going to finish with many members of the public on the list who want to speak. Mr. Kruse from the... I'm representing the HOA. We're going to hear Mr. Mazza's testimony, or a plan about the third driveway, and should be able to wrap.
And we had one more person, Mr. Levine.
Okay, let's...
I'll step aside.
Here, from... You want to hear from... We should... Here from, you want to hear from, we should finish with members of the public. Anybody who is not on the list that wants to speak, note to first because we won't have time. I'd prefer to give priority to those who haven't spoken.
Alex Strauss, S.T.R.A.U.S., 285 Haslett Way, Quail Brook.
C-WAG or no?
Not C-WAG, not represented by an attorney. So there was a gentleman recently, I don't want to get into a neighbor fight, but spoke about taxes and the other side of town, quote unquote, I believe is my neighbor, this gentleman. And I would like to ask a question and maybe answer it. How many warehouses are in our neighborhood? Answer zero. Okay. So it's easy to talk about our neighborhood versus quote unquote their neighborhood, but we don't have a lot of tractor trailers. We have problems with maybe, it would be nice if DeMonte Lane didn't have a ditch on one side. Okay, there are problems, but you know, we don't have warehouses. In addition, I want to say that years ago, I lived in the Levitt Development. For those people who don't know, there's like a Levitt Town here in town, like Levitt Town, New York, Levitt Town, Pennsylvania. Still the largest collection of single family homes in Franklin, I believe, detached homes. Now, when I lived there, I went to McAfee Road School. That was my first school. How did McAfee Road School come into existence? McAfee Road School was originally, was on property originally owned by the developer, Levitt. So we got a school. These folks get warehouses, okay? That's what the developer, you know, you know what you're going to get, I think, when you deal with linked logistics, okay? So that's not cool. Okay. So also, something that hasn't been mentioned, Mr. Landfrit, of course, has been very active in town here. Well, Mr. Landfrit at one point asked Mr. Rodriguez, the planner, he said, are you an expert on property values? Well, who was the original one to really benefit from property values? It was Mr. Landfrit's client. Why? Because he's selling the properties, Canal Walk, okay? Can reap more money, they can sell them faster. So he benefited there. He also benefited because he was representing Summerfields. So he benefited from the scenic corridor in that respect as well. He also benefited because he was representing Central Jersey College Prep, Down Metlars, okay? It's nice they have a scenic area. They needed a variance in the zoning board to, because it was going to be a school and for various other reasons as well, they needed variances, right, Mr. Thomas? So benefiting over and over from that scenic corridor, at least by association, has been Mr. Landfrit, okay? And basically, what now? He wants to chip away and destroy that scenic corridor, okay? Not cool. So I urge all of the members to vote no. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Levine, first name B.R.I.A.N., last name L.E.V.I.N.E., Pucillo Lane, Somerset, New Jersey, 08873. Dr. Orsini, board members, staff, thank you for the opportunity. Dr. Orsini, do you need to give me a warning or something?
Yeah, just to be fair, and you also were somewhat entertaining, should I say, the first time? So I'm sure we'll be more muted at this point in time.
Okay. And Dr. Orsini, I've known you for years and you even tried to help us get more senior housing. And even when we've been on different ends of issues, I've always found you to be fair and objective. So I will follow your request. No one has much accused me of being entertaining or funny in my whole life, so. On this, in the very, near the beginning of this thing, which was hurtful a little bit, the people specifically of Canal Walk were told, this is a done deal, which is kind of sad because that means no one wants to work on it. But I think the planning board has had time and given time to look at this. And in my experience, nothing is ever a done deal. It's unfortunate, the reports which came on this from the applicant, nothing personal, sir, is the noise, the light, the traffic. I found them, and though I'm not an expert, extremely deficient. And I blame a little bit the legislature because if they had stronger criteria for how people should give reports that are more all encompassing and not narrow little nitpicks, we would have gotten better ones. So like I said, I'm not an expert in any of those areas, but I am a CPA by profession. So talk about money. This, Canal Walk was always considered a cash cow by the town. Reap the money from you. And you know what? Talking about money, we're going to eat up the roads. We're going to have more traffic enforcement. There's going to be more snow plowing. This is going to cost us, I'd be glad to give you an analysis, more from the town than we're getting from the pittance of taxes that the warehouses are going to give us. So I've also seen well-heeled developers, some well-connected, I'm not accusing this developer of being well-connected, please don't get me wrong, get their way over the residents. And again, tax is not covering what they're doing. The warehouses, as been said before, there will be requests for air conditioning, I can almost guarantee it, in the warehouse, even though it has not now. There will be requests for more trucks, which there are not now, but there absolutely will be. This is going to cost us taxes. We're going to keep getting more requests. And the people in there are going to hope we all forget or die before they come up with their next request. And I hope we don't accommodate them in that way. And as was said before, which was a good point, all the ancillary points, there is going to be delivery trucks. There's going to be PSENG, there's going to be the water company, there's going to be ReadyFresh delivering water, there's going to be Uber Eats, there's going to be Uber itself. What about the garbage trucks also and the delivery and the utility? Everything is just too, too narrow to me. And I've seen this before in the town. When someone asked for a billboard on 287 and the town turned it down when they weren't supposed to. I'm sorry. They turned down the right billboard. It cost the town a quarter million dollars in legal fees. So in addition to the quality of life and the money this is going to cost and the taxes that are going to be raised, get ready, take out your wallet. There's going to be six to seven figures in legal and consulting fees because if the board turned it down, which would be a good idea, I'm sure Mr. Landfrit and his office, as is their right, will sue the heck out of us and we're going to be years litigating. And I know the lawyers' children have to pay for tuition and all that, but it's going to cost us. So the residents should, as always, come first when we have that ability. Dr. Orsini, board, I appreciate.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak before Mr. Cohen goes? Because after he goes, Mr. Lieberman, and then we're done. So is there anybody that needs to speak that's not on the list? Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Good evening.
Okay, hold on. Since you are not a member of the public and you were going to, you know, give a statement on behalf of your capacity, HOA, I'd just like to close the public portion so that we can then move to a closed public portion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Howard D. Cohen. I am special counsel to the Canal Walk Homeowners Association. I was engaged by the board by resolution on July 27, 2022 and memorialized in a retainer agreement of July 28, 2022. Canal Walk HOA is comprised of 1,251 residential units and has a population of approximately 2,000-plus residents. At the outset, let me emphatically state that no one, no one in Canal Walk wants two warehouses comprising 215,400 square feet directly across from where they live. From the time when B-9 filed its application for site plan approval and throughout the course of these proceedings, Canal Walk HOA followed what I submit is a legally realistic approach to this site plan application. The root of the problem here stems from the misguided decisions of the township's governing body, who years ago adopted ordinances that zoned the property in question, commercial business, industrial, and included warehouses as permitted uses. But this is far from a routine case, given the presence of the scenic corridor overlay ordinance. Given the zoning and the legal constraints, the focus of the Canal Walk HOA, beginning in June 2022 and over the course of the ensuing 16 months, has been to negotiate mitigation both on-site and off-site to reduce the undeniable enormous adverse impact that the proposed warehouse development will have upon its residents if the planning board approves the application. The on-site and off-site mitigation obtained by Canal Walk HOA was the result of months of discussions and meetings with representatives of B-9 and the township and their respective professionals. The end result was incorporation of the following mitigation in the plans in evidence before this planning board and in ordinances adopted by the township. The on-site mitigation includes, one, grading along the frontage of Schoolhouse and Metlars Roads to maximize preservation of existing mature trees. Two, construction of high berms along Schoolhouse and Metlars Roads to the rear of the graded frontage designed to provide a buffer to meet the requirements of the scenic corridor ordinance. Three, dense plantings on the berms of deer-resistant, fast-growing evergreens, deciduous trees and shrubs with emphasis on evergreens to serve as a buffer to the Canal Walk residences in furtherance of the scenic corridor overlay. Four, construction of a weather-resistant six-foot fence running along the top of the berms located to the rear of the landscaping to further enhance the buffer, consistent with the requirements of Schedule 6 of the Township Regulations and the scenic corridor overlay. Fifth, revision in the plans to meet the dimensional requirements of the scenic corridor overlay. Sixth, elimination of wall pack lighting on the western and rear walls of Building 1, the larger proposed warehouse, facing Metlars Road to reduce lighting impact on Canal Walk residences. Seven, reduction in the height of light poles from 25 to 15 feet in the employee parking lot located on the western side of proposed Building 1, facing Metlars Road and the Canal Walk residences to reduce adverse light impact. Eighth, use of go-away green color instead of white on the facade of the entire western and rear walls of proposed Building 1 facing Metlars and Canal Walk residences to reduce adverse impact. Nine, installation of signage prohibiting left turns out and right turns into the driveway, the truck driveway on Schoolhouse Road to bar truck traffic from traveling on Schoolhouse Road in front of Canal Walk and Summerfield Developments. Ten, installation of on-site signage barring truck parking, storage, idling, and queuing in the employee parking lot on the western side of proposed Building 1 facing Metlars Road and Canal Walk residences. In addition, Canal Walk HOA successfully obtained recommendations from the township engineer for installation of a concrete island at the proposed truck driveway entrance and exit on Schoolhouse Road to physically prevent exiting trucks from turning left onto Schoolhouse Road, as well as a separate third driveway for employee vehicles using the parking lot for Building 2, the proposed smaller warehouse. These recommendations are contained in the Township Engineers' Reports dated May 23 and June 26, 2023. The rationale for these recommendations in the Township Engineers' Report of June 26 is to enhance site operation safety by separating the truck and passenger vehicle uses, allow employee vehicles to make both right and left turns out of the third driveway, and make the restriction against left turns out of the truck driveway self-enforcing, given the limitations of the Township Police Department in terms of personnel to oversee compliance. Also included in the Canal Walk's mitigation list but refused by B-9 was a limitation on operating hours to lessen the negative impact on Canal Walk and Summerfield residents. The governing body has since adopted Ordinance 4414-23, which includes provisions prohibiting specified operations between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. While B-9 has sued the township to invalidate the ordinance, it nonetheless presently governs the B-9 application. Off-site mitigation measures were also successfully negotiated with the township by HOA. These included restrictions against stopping and standing on Schoolhouse and Metlars, Section 226-10 of the Township Code, two, restrictions barring trucks over four tons on Schoolhouse and Metlars Road in Section 226-17, and three, prohibition of overnight parking by vehicles having a gross weight rating of 12,500 pounds and trailers and semi-trailers between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 AM on all township roads in Section 226-15. I am informed that the governing body has also agreed to include purchase and installation of monitoring cameras in the 2024 municipal budget to aid in enforcement of these restrictions. The above on-site and off-site measures are designed to achieve a realistic legal approach to addressing the draconian impact of warehouse development on property directly across from Canal Walk and Summerfields if the planning board approves this application. Case law under the municipal land use law recognizes that the planning board has discretion to impose reasonable conditions should it decide to approve the B-9 application. Such conditions to include, among others, the requirement of a third driveway and the requirement of a concrete median. While much of the on-site and off-site mitigation described today is contained in a resolution adopted by the Board of Directors on December 22, 2022, the resolution pointedly and very clearly states, quote, "Adoption of this resolution shall not be construed as interpreted or as endorsement of the B-9 application and the B-9 applicant is left to its proofs in its application and as a matter of law." All of what I presented to you today has been reported to the Canal Walk residents in three open meetings and two comprehensive reports. Bottom line, no one in Canal Walk wants these monstrous warehouses. Let there be no doubt that regardless of the mitigation, the Canal Walk community will breathe a sigh of relief if the planning board concludes B-9 has not met its burden of proof and denies the application. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Well, thank you very much, members of the board. It's been a, it's been quite a journey. And I've enjoyed going through this, but I'm also happy that we're at the end.
Name and law firm counsel.
Thank you very much. Stuart Lieberman from the firm Lieberman Blackeridge Sinkovich, and I represent C-WAG. At the conclusion of this, I think it's clear that this application should be denied. It should be denied for various reasons that really are based on what occurred during the various presentations this entire time. What, okay, okay, fine. I'd like to go over some of those reasons for you. Number one, you'll recall that Mary Pace Goldman provided testimony. She is a groundwater specialist and a hydrogeologist. Easier probably to do than to say. Mary made a very important point. That is, the data that was used to determine the seasonal high water table was improperly generated. Under the DEP regulations that she cited, that data had to be Under the DEP regulations that she cited, that data had to be taken between January and April, and it wasn't. Now, this isn't rebutted. There's nothing in the record that explains why what has to be done wasn't done. And the reason that the tests have to be taken between January and Aprils, that's the rainy season. When, if you want to know what the seasonal high water table is, you have to test when there's water, and that's when there's the most water, and that's why DEP requires it. You have not heard from the applicant a reason why the law was ignored. Because of that, the stormwater system that was designed predicated on that is worthless. And why do we care about that? You've heard tonight and you've heard last night about flooding and flooding concerns. When you have a stormwater system that isn't designed properly, you get flooding. And so in this particular case, where there are so many concerns about existing flooding conditions, about water in the basements, then you need to be concerned about a stormwater system that was designed predicated on improper data. That's one reason why respectfully this application should be denied. In addition to that, I would note that Mary indicated that the, that their basin, one of the basins qualifies as a dam under the Dam Safety Act, and there shouldn't be trees planted on that. I would just note that for the record. But something else she said, and this was in her report and in her testimony, and it's very important, is the runoff curve failed to use the, failed to designate the existing land as woods in good condition. That was in her report and that was in her testimony. What is that? That's part of what you have to do to design a stormwater system. It determines what the existing conditions are, so you know what you have to meet after development. By not using the proper designation, which is woods in good condition, the applicant artificially deflated its obligations post-construction. And in so doing, it really materially misled the board about how effective and robust the stormwater system needs to be. That is another reason why this application should be denied. There's another reason, and that is Gene Boe explained this, he was our noise expert. You, and you've heard this a few times tonight, I'm not going to harp on it, but the EIS was materially defective. In fact, it was just shy of worthless. One of the statements in the EIS was that the applicant did not anticipate that the facility would exceed the daytime or nighttime limits, and that's on page 10 of the environmental impact statement. How in the world did the applicant come up with that conclusion? Gene Boe said, well, one way you could determine whether it's going to likely exceed the limits is by doing modeling. You don't require modeling, but what you do require, and what the case law requires, is that an assertion by an applicant before a planning board be supported by facts in the record. That wasn't. It was a naked assertion. In law, we would call it a net opinion, which means that it wasn't supported by facts or law whatsoever. Does it matter? Yes, because you're going to have those backup sounds that drive everybody crazy, you're going to have the sounds of air brakes, you're going to have a lot of noise. And by the way, somebody referenced this tonight, and they were right. The Planning Commission in, the New Jersey Planning Commission in 2022 indicated that noise can be very intrusive from warehouses. So it's a known fact that this can be a real problem. These people who are here, who came to every one of these meetings and live across the street from this development, have a right to be able to open their windows at night and to live in peace and to enjoy the serenity that they anticipated they would enjoy when they built, when they bought their project. This will take away from it in a very, very serious way. You also heard that the, and Mr. Rodriguez testified, that the, that the proposal violates this or is inconsistent with the scenic corridor ordinance. I would note the following about that issue. First of all, and I think most importantly, Section 112-188 of the municipal code here in Franklin Township provides that this board can deny a site plan application for many reasons, but two of them I want to refer to. Number one, if the application in some manner is inconsistent with the preservation of natural resources, and that's letter B. And D, and this is the one that I really think is important, if the board finds that it is not in harmony with the surrounding community. What we're talking about here is a constant noise source, a constant annoyance, and two, two warehouses, not one, not one. One would have been a problem enough, but they had to go for two. They had to go for two across the street from this, these beautiful developments, across the street from where these people believed they could live the rest of their lives enjoying the peace and tranquility that they expected. Now we're going to have trucks on the roadway, we're going to have diesel emissions on the roadway, we're going to have risks to anybody on a bicycle, we're going to have risks to people who might want to take their children or grandchildren to the school stop, maybe to a park. With this much tractor-trailer traffic, I think you have enough to conclude that this application is not harmonious with the surrounding community in such a significant and material way that I would respectfully submit that you should invoke the provisions of Section 112-188 and find that you're denying it based on a failure to be harmonious and also a destruction of natural resources. Over 500 trees are going to come down, and they are being replaced with very, very small trees. You remember the tree study. You asked, how many are large trees? One was. My recollection is, one was. Yes, they're replacing them all, but with very small trees. Does it matter? Yes, it's part of the scenic corridor issue. Taking away that many trees is a real problem in terms of the scenic corridor, but also there's a flooding issue, and one of the people, one of the residents referred to that. You take, trees drink a tremendous amount of water, and you take those trees away, you're encouraging even more flooding, something that shouldn't happen. I would respectfully remind the board that the Environmental Commission in March 23, 2023, I think, properly acknowledged that the project fails to meet the protective qualities of the scenic corridor ordinance. I would respectfully ask that this board make the same finding, and that predicated on your authority, your overall authority and your authority under Section 112-188, you make the finding that it's inconsistent with the preservation of natural resources, that it's inconsistent with the qualities of the neighboring already, the developments that are already there, and that you reject this application in its entirety. Thank you very much for your courtesy.
Once again, my name is John DeLuca of the firm Boris Golden Foley Vignolo Hyman &amp; Stahl, and I'm filling in for Peter Lanfrid in this popularity contest. I mean, I'm just trying to represent my client to the best of my ability. I'm not going to speak about lawsuits tonight, I'm not going to speak about appeals. I'm going to stick to the facts of our, of our application, and I'm going to stick to the relief we're seeking and the legal standard that you have to really look at that relief under. As everyone in this room recalls, especially this board recalls, we're here seeking two items of relief. That's a minor subdivision approval, which our application is fully conforming with your ordinance, and a site plan approval for the construction of two warehouses, which is also fully conforming with your ordinances. On June 22, 2022, the Township's Planning Department deemed this a complete application for development. Under the existing zoning regulations at that time, my client has a legal right to develop this property as proposed. In September of 2021, two years ago, my client closed on its purchase of this property only after following due diligence that the site was properly zoned and could be developed as proposed. My client has since paid taxes on this property with the intention of carrying out that investment. Tonight is our eighth hearing before the board. Based on my review of the extremely voluminous record, my client has granted the board an extension to act on the application on at least three occasions. Now, we apologize for our inability to extend the vote any further. For more conversations on this proposal, but with the new ordinances continuing to be passed by the Township Council, my client's rights are being infringed upon, and we need to move this process forward. My client has received approvals from all outside agencies, including an NJDEP letter of interpretation, stream encroaching permits, soil conservation approval, and county approval. The DRCC has reviewed the project and basically proved it subject to this board's approval. The DRCC report is very compelling because they received numerous letters from objectors. I believe there are over 200 of those letters, all of which were dismissed by the DRCC. At the first hearing, the board indicated that it was not inclined to approve this application with any variances attached to it. Initially, we were seeking two variances. We've since taken those, the board's position under advisement, and we've amended our plan to reduce the square footage of the buildings by over 30,000 square feet, thereby eliminating all variances. My client has made every possible effort to do the right thing and be a good neighbor while protecting its investment. Now, that includes repairing the township pipe on Metlers Road, which resolved the flooding issue in that area. They've designed and redesigned and reduced this project size to minimize any and all impact on the development as it may have on the surrounding areas. Before even making this application, my client engaged in six months of community outreach. As Mr. Cohen mentioned, that included meeting with the township, members of the Canal Walk Homeowners Association. We also invited C-WAG to meet with us, they declined, and we had, they had, and the Canal Walk Homeowners Association had a very lengthy list of requests. We incorporated absolutely every suggestion we possibly could, and some of those suggestions we could not incorporate because doing so would have created further variances. Now, Canal Walk consists of 1,262 units and at least 2,000 residents. Canal Walk residents who have appeared at these meetings to object represent only a small portion of that whole community, an extremely passionate and extremely vocal portion, but a slim portion.
Folks, you may not like what he has to say, but he has the right to say it. So let him finish, and we can be, and we can move on.
I think I'm winning that popularity contest, I swear. Many of these objectors purchased their homes within the last five years, they said that themselves, and that's after Bryant Court was developed. At the time those homes were built, my client's property was zoned for industrial use, specifically permitting warehouse development. So while it may not be pleasant to hear, those residents either knew or should have known they were buying homes adjacent to an industrial zone. The board should discredit and disregard completely the testimony of the objector's planner, Mr. Carlos Rodriguez. He was questioned adequately by, by Mr. Lanfrid and by this board, and could not come up with answers to prove that he was even familiar with the area. Regarding the objector's noise acoustic consultant, Mr. Gene Boe, he never testified that there would in fact be harmful noise, a harmful noise issue generated by this development. Mr. Boe recommended that a study be conducted, a study that is not required by your township ordinance. If any activity occurs that violates the noise ordinance, that activity will have to stop until the violation can be corrected. That is the case whether the noise is created in an impulsive noise, like a bang periodically, or a continuous noise, like a constant humming. Either way, the operator on this property will have to comply with the noise ordinance, and there was no testimony ever provided that that operator would not or could not. Also concerning the issued noise, on the other end of Canal Walk is the Central Jersey Airport, that has planes taking off and landing with a flight pattern over Canal Walk. There's also a railroad in Manville where residents of Canal Walk can hear train whistles at all hours of the day or night. As to the objector's engineer, Ms. Mary Goldman, we would be agreeable to re-locating the trees around the detention area as she recommended. We would also be willing to swap out the deciduous trees for evergreen trees to provide more screening in the winter months, excuse me. Now, regarding all of the other objectors and public commenters, nearly all of them provided conclusory statements unsupported by fact testimony, and as they were not sworn in to provide testimony under oath, any and all of those factual assertions should be disregarded by this board. Now, I would like to turn to the inconsistencies of the scenic corridor and the BI zoning district regulations. The board clearly and concisely weighed in on the preferences, on its preferences in dealing with those inconsistencies, and we incorporated those changes in the application. The only objective standards the scenic corridor ordinance has is a 100-foot setback, which we comply with, and then there's also the 12-foot driveway width, which clearly does not apply to this project as that regulation complates a residential driveway. Any township ordinance effective after June 22, 2022, that amended the Franklin Township Municipal Code, Chapter 112, Land Development, are not applicable to this application. And that's based on the time of the application rule set forth in NJSA 40-55D-10.5. The time of the application rule is discussed at length in a case called Dunbar Homes Incorporated versus Zoning Board of Adjustment for the Township of Franklin. That case went all the way to the New Jersey Supreme Court. And while the township was successful in defending against the developer in that case, it was only because the court determined that the developer's application was not a complete application for development, whereas my client's application was deemed complete on June 22, 2022. Under the regulations that existed on that date, this application is in perfect compliance, which is why we are seeking no variances. The authority to determine whether the application requires a variance is not vested in this board. It's vested in the zoning officer who made that determination. He did so and found no variance relief was required for this project. In such an application, under the case law, it is clear, the Township Planning Board, and I'm quoting right now from case law, is without a, is without authority to deny site plan approval because of offsite track conditions. That comes from a case called Duncan Donuts of New Jersey versus North Brunswick Planning Board. Planning for traffic patterns is an exercise of the zoning power vested in the Township Council. The planning board may go no further than to condition approval on improvements to on-track entrances and exits, and to contribute to off-track improvements made necessary by the on-track development. The case law goes even further in stating a planning board's authority in reviewing an application for site plan approval is limited to determining whether the development plan conforms with the zoning ordinance and the applicable provisions of the site plan ordinance. That's from a case called Pizzo Matten Group versus Township of Randolph, which was also heard by the New Jersey Supreme Court. This application is in perfect conformance with the zoning ordinance and the site plan ordinance. We comply with all other state statutes in effect at the time of our application. For all these reasons, we respectfully request that you vote to approve this project, as we are only asking that the existing zoning regulations be enforced. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mazza, let's maybe in five minutes or less, give us a synopsis of the driveway plan that you recommend.
Okay, board, what I had done is I had taken the B9 Schoolhouse site plan, and I had done an overlay on it. So that's the overall, I'm going to zoom in just so everybody can see a little better. This is the proposal here, where I'm recommending adding a 22-foot-wide driveway to the east of the proposed truck driveway. That would be for the, for the warehouse staff of the 33 passenger vehicles. You'll see, the green areas here are areas that are proposed to be asphalt now, that I would recommend become landscaped islands to block off a combination of the traffic. In these areas here, we could also have potentially the applicant look to screen the building more, add some more landscaping. Now, in terms of the truck driveway, I'll zoom in there a little more. What I'm recommending is a six-foot-wide minimum concrete island in the middle that would be raised six inches from grade, and there would be four to five bollards in this area that would prevent trucks from turning left. And in a second, I'll show the turning movements. I have kept the driveway curb cuts the same, but I did have to widen out the radii just for the turning moves of the trucks, which I'll also show on the next exhibit. Now, the only difference to this plan versus what we would recommend potentially from the applicant is the applicant has agreed to put a sidewalk along Schoolhouse Road, so there would have to be a handicap ramp across this driveway for ADA compliance. So there would have to be a handicap ramp across this driveway for ADA compliance. I don't show that on this because we haven't received a new site plan showing that improvement, but it's something that's been agreed to. On the next page, I throw, I show three, sorry, give me one second there. I show three turning exhibits. What I'm going to do is I'm going to zoom in again for the board and public. What these are showing is a WB67 truck. As everybody stated, it's a 63-and-a-half-foot truck that would be exiting the site. So this show, this first turning movement shows a truck taking a right-hand turn and traveling eastbound along Schoolhouse Road. This truck could not, and that's the main purpose of this one turning movement. The truck would go in this direction and turn to the east. The next turning movement is a very similar movement with the applicant had shown, which is a truck traveling eastbound and taking it right into the site. So as you can see here, this driveway movement would work. And then the last exhibit that I was showing was the key to why I was recommending this, aside from the separation of traffic. So any vehicle leaving the site and trying to make a left out of the site and travel westbound would not be able to get over this median and these bollards, and that would prevent any trucks from, end up going westbound from the site to Weston Canal Road. And that was generated also from comments we received with concerns from truck traffic in front of the Canal Walk facility, or residences, sorry. So in a nutshell, that's pretty much what I wanted to show the board for their, for clarification of my previous recommendation.
So at this point in time, it's my suggestion that probably there is not much to be gained from board deliberation beyond which we've already heard, and in which the board has put on record during many long hours of testimony. So at this point, I would like to, you know, call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
I want to put the motion on the floor. I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we deny the application. There are several areas that I personally have questions about. After all these months and all these hearings, there are more questions in some areas that are unanswered than we have answers for. I heard a tentative agreement on hours of operation. I've never heard that completely agreed upon at all to this point. I think that's still, that's a necessary thing, but it's open for discussion. Matter of fact, the applicant's attorney told us one hearing, we had no right to ask for that. Another issue, stormwater management. You all heard about that. We have an expert that says that this is, their main system is a dam that could breach. Normally, the board wants landscaping. Her recommendation was to take it away. We never got the chance to discuss whether it all should be removed, whether certain types of plants should be left, others should be included. Point is, it's more about the information that we didn't get than what we did get. Landscaping's another issue. It's a scenic corridor. There was an opportunity to discuss having a green wall on the Mettler's Road side that would help mitigate some of the scenic corridor issues. There was also questions about the need for more landscaping that would be apropos for the winter, to do a better job screening, evergreens for screening from the road when the other trees are losing their leaves. The third driveway we're just discussing tonight, this is a discussion that should have been open for any number of previous meetings. Still don't know for sure how the applicant feels about it. But I, you know, for our information purposes, we had a look at it, but this deserves a discussion of its own. Replacing trees is another issue. Applicants said this was a Christmas tree farm up to two years ago. Almost 50 years I've lived here, I never saw a Christmas tree sold from that property ever. All right? And to think that evergreens that are 40 to 50 feet tall should be considered part of the Christmas tree crop, so it's exempt from a tree replacement requirement, I think it's absurd. It's another issue that isn't resolved. I think the tree replacement, including those trees that the applicant considers Christmas trees, would make a lot bigger deficit than what might exist. We heard about the environmental impact study. There's questions about that that are not answered. The other issue I have a big concern about is noise. The applicant's comment is, "We'll meet the state standard." Well, we need to know what the impact of the noise is going to be, so we can decide as a board whether we're considering the proper noise mitigation measures. It's not enough for the litigant, for the objector's attorney, or expert to say, "Truck makes 72 decibels of noise five feet away." I don't care about five feet away. I care about 150 feet away where the houses are. None of the people, none of the noise experts ever mentioned anything about what the impact a 40-foot-high concrete building would have on the noise if it stands between the origination, the origin of the noise and the property line, let's say, on Mettler's Road. These are all things that we would need to consider in order to think about whether there's a mitigation that we need to apply to this. We didn't get this information. We got a lot of wishy-washy answers and actual refusal to answer from experts on both sides of the fence. The bottom line is, I don't feel I have enough information to do anything other than to vote a no for this. So I'll entertain a second.
Mr. Chairman? I would second Bob, my colleague Bob Thomas's motion to deny, for all the reasons he so articulated, he articulated here. And I, I'm an elected official, and I hear and listen to the people. That's an overriding factor on top of all the reasons that he articulated here. I think I've heard the people's call, and it is my duty and responsibility to listen to their call. I do live in a 55-plus community, and I hear from my community as well, although they are not here. It is a big factor on this decision, apart from all the other reasons that we have heard here. So I make a motion, second the motion.
Christine, can you pull the board? And to be clear, a yes vote is to affirm the motion to deny. A no vote means you do not affirm the motion.
Mr. Chairman, before the roll call is taken, may I ask a question of the mover and the second to include the potential of various violations or failures to complete the provisions of 112-188 of the Township Code?
amend.
You agree to accept that as part of the resolution, Mr. Embarrasson?
Thank you.
Now Christine, pull for it.
So during the roll call, you have to state your reason if you're denying. That's the way we've always done it. So if you say yes, that you're going to deny, you need to state your reasons why you're denying it. Councilman Embarrasson, I've already heard yours, so you just can give me your yes or no?
Yes.
Sammy Chevahn?
Yes, and I found the application wholly incomplete, whether it was around noise concerns or around environmental studies where there were overreaching statements, like there will be no impact to the neighbors or the community. Sort of at every juncture, even at the point of whether there will be flooding on the streets based on the water table and whether there's a dam there, we had a lot of questions come up with no complete answers, and every time we tried to get answers, I felt like we didn't get anything that I could legitimately approve here. So soundly say yes to denying this application.
Erica Inosensio?
I'm going to say yes to denying as well, for some of the reasons already stated, mainly feeling like there was more information that I would have liked to have heard, aside from whether or not it was something that was required. I think it's pretty clear that it would have been helpful to the board to have received, especially information and studies regarding noise. So that's the thing that's the most concerning to me regarding this application.
Theodore Chase?
I would vote yes, primarily again on the issue of noise. I understand that the applicant has refused to entertain a restriction by which trucks should not operate on the property between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM or some such hours. A further restriction I would have liked to ask for is that any on-site vehicles such as forklifts, which have provision to warn pedestrians of backing up, that they not use the standard beep, 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 but instead there are several other ways of warning pedestrians such as tow trucks.
Ted, we really probably don't need to go in there. If you're voting to yes, why guide the applicant on what to do?
Pardon, what did you say?
I said, if we're, if you're voting yes, why are we guiding the applicant on what to do, just to give your motion, to give you the rationale for your yes vote?
I was giving a rationale for a yes vote, as I was instructed to do. Plus, we've had no consideration of air pollution by heavy truck traffic, which residents have indicated is a serious concern. I think those are my main reasons. Thank you.
Robert Thomas? I heard your reason, you can just say yes or no.
You're supporting your motion?
Vote is no for the reasons.
No, you would vote yes. Yes to...
Vote is yes to deny, for the reasons I stated. Thank you.
So before I express the vote, I do want to say something that happened a little bit earlier, and I want to address it to everyone. So you know the expression, "When you see something, say something"? Well, here's what happened a little bit earlier during the break. I was in the ladies' room, and there was somebody from the audience, I'm not going to out her. She was hostile to the applicant's attorney. I think that's wrong, it's unacceptable, and it should not be done. Remain civil. It doesn't matter which way the vote goes. So I just wanted to say that before I cast the vote. I'm going to say yes to denying the warehouse.
Rebecca?
So, let me, let me just, I'm so sorry. You know, I want to say a couple of things. So I recognized and I evaluated all the concerns by the community here, and have given thoughtful consideration to not only the community, but the applicant's representation. What I feel is that the applicant has failed to answer satisfactory to the questions I had, primarily what Bob Thomas kind of went into detail, the noise, the pollution, the, especially the landscape, the trees, the amount of trees, whether it's conifers, the evergreens. There just wasn't clarity in all of those, and a couple of other things that, you know, Mr. Thomas went into great detail. So for those reasons, I'm going to oppose the warehouse.
Rebecca Hilbert?
First, I want to thank everyone who took the time out for the past couple of months to come here and participate in this process. I also want to thank staff for all the work that they've done in supporting the board. We can't do this without them. I'm going to vote yes on the resolution to deny the warehouse for the reasons already expressed by a lot of my colleagues, specifically lack of what I feel proper information around noise, the EIS, the scenic corridor, and a number of other things we already talked about. Thank you.
Chairman Ruscini?
Yeah, my vote is yes as well, and truthfully, it has little to do with any other than a point that Mr. Bernstein made, and that I return to during the applicant's testimony again and again, typified by the invalid statements in the environmental impact statement. But I just don't believe that the burden of believability of their responses, the satisfaction that they were satisfactorily addressing, the board's concerns, which were made quite clear, even after very specific direction from the board, I simply don't feel that it meets the standard outlined legally and by case law and municipal and use law for the board to support, and therefore I vote yes to deny.
It's not a done deal.
Christine, Christine, for purposes of the record, the vote is, how many in favor to deny, how many against?
There's, um... Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you.
Okay, board's not adjourned yet, until I adjourn it.
Folks, please.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.